Looks like we're on.
I would like to call the September first meeting of the New Market Town Council to order and we will start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. The first, actually before we start our agenda, I just wanted to mention that Counselor Blackstone is excused this evening. And then the first item that we have is for public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Then I will close public forum at seven oh one. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes and we have two minutes to approve. And so we, the first is from our non-public meeting on July twenty first, twenty twenty one, and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July twenty one, the July twenty first, twenty twenty one, non-public meeting.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any requests to speak. I will just say that they were sent out immediately after that non-public meeting, but they just weren't on our agenda last time because I remember thinking like, I thought we had a non-public, but just wasn't there, so I didn't think. So, but thank you for sending them out and sending them out again. If you could call the roll, please. Next is from our August eighteenth regular meeting and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August eighteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting minutes.
Any questions, comments, changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. And the next we have the town manager's report.
Before you do that, it'd be, a motion would be in place to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
Thank you. I would accept a motion.
I will make a motion that we seal the minutes of the non-public.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. And now the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just an update on COVID nineteen and the vaccination. As of August twenty fifth, there were nineteen active cases in the community. We've had six hundred fourteen cumulative cases or six point five percent of the population has had COVID. Our health region, the Seco's Health Region and Rockham County both have substantial levels of community transmission. The Seco's Health Region has seen a seven point one percent increase in new cases over the past week and the Rockham County, in Rockham County has seen an increase of seven point seven percent. As of right now, we're continuing to monitor, see if there needs to be a change in the mask mandate. Part of the reason is our hospitals still not seeing the large increase in cases in our region. Again, we're part of the Seco's Health Hospital Group, which is Exeter, Frisbee, Huggins, Portsmouth and Wentworth Douglas, and there were twenty-two confirmed hospitalizations. Again, please note that mask mandates were not to get the community to zero cases, but to lessen the impacts on hospitals. We are looking to see if we may change some wording on signage and I'm going to see what other communities are doing. If you notice many grocery stores, restaurants are doing the, we recommend, because we're at a high transmission rate, that masks be worn. As for staff, I'm still doing the requiring vaccinations to not wear a mask and we'll go from there. For vaccinations, population, we've hit sixty percent vaccinated with at least one shot. We had five thousand six hundred seventy-six people, doses for one shot be distributed and five thousand two hundred thirty-seven, fifty-five point four percent are fully vaccinated. Please note that that does include those who cannot be vaccinated, so people under the age of twelve, and the one shot does also include Johnson and Johnson. So you would not have a second shot there. Where Pfizer's just been approved by the FDA and we're hoping this would encourage more people to be vaccinated. I've been working with a number of stakeholders to see how we can increase the number of vaccinations in the community. Had a meeting with Lamprey Healthcare, the Housing Authority, Lane Chaney of the Chaney Group and Kim Tilton of our Senior Center, and we discussed how we can get the underserved portions of our community vaccinated. So actually it's not tentatively, it is on September ninth. Lamprey in conjunction with rental, property rental, rental property owners will be hosting a mobile vaccination clinic at the Chaney's Properties in, on Exeter Street. And they're going to be promoting that throughout the building and we have some promotions that are going on as well. As you know, the community church will be having one on the twenty-third at, I believe it's at their, at the church. There you have the state van coming in. We're also going to be working with the Housing Authority to have a clinic there as well. The numbers just aren't great, of people being vaccinated in those facilities. It's a mix of those, and it, looking at the numbers, it's interesting, the group of between the ages of thirty to mid forties. Let's say twenties to mid forties, they're not as highly vaccinated as the seniors and lower. They think they're invincible, so they don't want to, they believe that they don't need a vaccination. So we're trying to reach out to them as well to make sure it's, one thing we're also doing is try to make it not the government's coming in. That's why we prefer to have Lamprey or encourage them to go to Walgreens or their healthcare provider. Because there, there's still that stigma that if the government is doing whatever with the vaccine when they give it to them. So we're trying to, that's why we try to get other partners to, to do this and push it home. And the next item, as the town council may have seen in the media, the town of Peterborough was a victim of an internet-based fraud and had two point three million dollars stolen from them. This money will not be recovered. I asked the Director of Finance Administration to look at this case and see how it may impact our operations. First, our ACH exposure, which is how they got the money from Peterborough, is relatively low. And we have federal payroll taxes, which is typically between thirty and forty thousand every other week, and that's required by federal government that we use ACH. We pay Aflac, which is about sixty to seventy dollars monthly ACH. And Great West was approximately a thousand dollars. In USDA Rural Development, we have to pay approximately three hundred thousand dollars in August and February. And this is an automatic withdrawal and this payment method is also required from them, and that's for payment of loans that we have. Second, the rest of our account payables are paid by paper check. It may have some physical address on file and confirmed. If a company asks us to send it to another location, we make phone calls and verify the change is really the company's address for receiving payments. Third, in terms of what probability of similar threat happening to New Market, we'll engage in training our employees in basic cybersecurity. Primex has an online course, which anyone working for us can register through Primex website, which we've actually already sent out that information. We parametrically send out alerts to our staff on known threats and what to do about them, particularly phishing incidents. As it turns out, staff members across departments tend to be more cautious and they reach out to either myself, the Director of Finance, or Back Bay with questions about suspicious emails. In addition, when alerts are sent from the National Cybersecurity Center, which we do receive, we work with IT support to inform them to, of known vulnerabilities and fixes. And finally, we, when we change back banks, which we are going out for RFPs this year, we'll be working with them to implement payment security and form a positive pay for ACH checks. And we're planning to make more payments through TD Bank purchasing cards. The form will make checks and ACH payments more secure and the latter will reduce the number of checks needing processes. Less paper, toner, envelope postage time. We backed up by the bank in the event of fraud or dispute. There's also a potential for rebates with AP versus via credit cards. What I did is I also gave, attached the press release from Peterborough to this. For those that don't know, Peterborough was scammed by a phishing entity saying there was the Conval School District requiring payments. The, looked exactly right. It was an email. Everything came through. Individual did not check from the individual and sent the money via ACH to this entity and lost two point three million dollars. And it's not known, it's not recoverable, but it's also not known if insurance will cover it. So, on a fiscal year twenty-one budget, we have run the final numbers for fiscal year twenty-one. And for the unauthorized amount, we expended ninety-three percent of our total operating budget with eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars remaining. Please note this is much higher due to the various COVID funds that we received. As for revenues, we ended up six hundred fifty-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars higher than anticipated. Motor vehicles is above a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, higher than anticipated, and rumor meals tax was fifty-four thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars higher. One area that did not hit was building imperments, which I was very, was surprised. During the pandemic, there was a lot of building, but it could also go to that there was no wood for part of the process during the pandemic, so you couldn't do that, some of the projects. So we're going to be monitoring that for the coming year. Finally, we've been working with our website hosting company to redesign the town website. The way the people have accessed the web now has changed dramatically since we last redesigned. More and more people are using mobile devices to access information. Our intention is to make it even more easier for people to navigate the site. With that in mind, I did provide the council the mock-up of what it's going to look like. It's basic. I, to be quite honest, that's even not basic enough for me when I was recommending it. But it needs to be more, right now, to get things, you have to go to departments and you just need to be able to hit a button and get, and that's, and that was what it was at one point. Everybody loved going on the internet and go to every webpage in the world. But that's not the way it is anymore. You want to click and get to something right now. So we're completely redesigning it from, making it much easier with buttons. That, how to pay my, how to pay bills, how to, what do I do this? So it does, downplaying the departments and playing, upplaying the services. And that is all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions or comments for the town manager? Counselor Sanders.
I would just like to commend the town manager for all his efforts to increase the vaccination right in our town. I personally appreciate that and as a town council member, I appreciate it. I also thank you for your update on the financial internal controls here that we have in place. And just to take a minute to warn individuals that it's not just companies that are being subjected to phishing expeditions. And just remember, your bank, the IRS, the US Treasury Department, the police are not going to contact you by email. They're going to either send you a letter or they're going to show up at your door. So be very, very careful what you click on.
And now texts.
Yes.
People are getting, phishing scams are going through texts a lot more.
And I got one by phone yesterday saying that my Verizon account had been suspended as I'm talking on my Verizon phone, so.
Did you have anything else or?
Nope.
I'm all set. Thank you. Counselor Bayback.
I just wanted to say, I think the mock-up of the website looks great. I think that's an awesome project. I know even I sometimes have a hard time finding things on the website, so I think that mentality switch of, you know, who the user is and what they're looking for. I just commend that work.
I agree. And I'm not seeing any other requests to speak at the moment, but, so I just have a couple of things. So also, I just wanted to second what Counselor Bayback said, the redesign, it looks modern and just welcoming. So I think that that's, it's leaps and bounds better than what we currently have. So, it's a mock-up, but my hope obviously is that it's also user-friendly, so, but the design is really great. I was hoping for, if you had any updates on the roadwork, I know that that's, if there's anything.
Yes.
Since our last meeting.
Yes, not good either. There's a lot of ledge. They've been asking for some more time, including working on weekends. I did not, I did not allow them work on Sundays, but I did say Saturdays they will be able to get out there and try to finish that up. They basically pulled all the crew from a neighboring community where they were also doing a major water main replacement downtown, or my family member is the mayor, so I don't want to say where. But they moved everybody here. They want to get everybody in for Bay Road first because they want to get school open and they want to have the last, least amount of impact on the schools. Once, I mean, not just to Bay Road, South Main Street, as soon as that's done, they're going to go to Bay Road and finish it up there. But they're just trying to wrap everything up as soon as possible.
Do you have an estimated date?
And a month. Oh, just to go along with that, just to remind people too, that when I say that's, that does not mean finalized paving. They will still have those cuts in because you don't want to put the new pavement over the, they want to let it settle for the winter. So next year, there'll be the final level, layer of pavement.
On South Main?
And Bay Road.
But they're going to do the first course on Bay Road?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yes, it will still be.
And then, I just, I don't know if you have this information, I mean, you probably don't. But just a couple of updates that I'm hoping for is the economic development plan?
We're meeting September eighth.
And the solar array and the sidewalk plan?
Sidewalk plan, let me find out. Solar array, we're working on the right-of-way from New Road to the Wilson property and what we can and cannot do on that right-of-way and try to, we're negotiating. Oh, they're in your, never mind, the Olympian?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Now?
No, you can do it whenever.
Well, no, I'm, I'm happy to do it now. So, yeah, I did want to mention, Liza Corso is a New Market resident and recently, so she's an eighteen-year-old. She recently represented the United States and obviously New Market in the Para Olympics in Tokyo and won the silver medal in the fifteen-hundred meter race. She, I believe, is going
Back to school.
From Tokyo, like, straight to her freshman year in college. And she's going to run for her school. And so we're working with the recreation.
The department's going to work to see if somehow we can honor her when she's on break in the community. So I've got a number of people asking me, and yes, we are working on that, but want to make sure she's here for the honor.
But it's really exciting to, I've, so she's, I think, just a year ahead of, yeah, just a year ahead of, of my son. And so I've, you know, known who she is for, for years and she's got a couple of brothers also and always have seen her and her family running. And it's really cool to have that honor for our community. And that's all I had. So moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Counselor Ward.
Yes. So the Budget Committee met this Monday. And the first thing is they voted to approve the resignation of Mike Mazati from the Budget Committee. He is moving out of town. So that is a budget committee, a seat open. Also discussed a desire to get more information or be notified about grant funding going ahead of time. And also, you're considering a request for an executive summary to go with town financial report to make it easier to read. We had a presentation by, and the school. Due to COVID nineteen-related closures and reduction in operations, the school spent far less of its budget than expected with additional revenue coming in from state and federal grants. School retained two point five percent of unexpended funds equalling four hundred and fifty-four, or thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, with a remainder of one point five three million in the funds. That money can either be used to lower the tax rate next year, but would then cause a spike next year. Or it can be used, using RSA one nine seven colon three dash A, allowing this special meaning for, sorry, for a change in educational funding, if approved by voters. The funds could be used in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This would require a special meeting before the tax rate is set in November. And the school is also considering a warrant article to increase the amount of money they can retain from unexpected funds from two point five to five percent. And for the town report, it's nothing too much to report there. Town revenue is close to expected, a little bit over what is expected, and our expenditure is a little bit under what were expected, also due to COVID. And, yeah, that's a bit.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question? What did, what, do you know, what's the, the process to fill that vacancy of the?
The municipal budget committee fills their own vacancies.
Okay, they do?
Yep.
So they'll appoint a member?
I'm not sure that was, and they just said they, he has just said he was going to resign, so. Typically, yes, it's their, it's their appointment. It'll be till the next election.
Thank you. Counselor Conley.
The, the CIP committee met on Monday and Wednesday to begin the planning process. There are two more meetings of that committee that'll be next, on Wednesday, September eighth, and Monday, September thirteenth, at the end of that process and will be, be finished. Meeting number one was mostly organizational and the meeting today, I went through and received reports from the water depart, water and sewer facilities, public works and recreation.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, I just have one, sort of a committee report. I met with Dale Pike and with the town manager. And Dale Pike, if you're not familiar, he was a town counselor for several years and served on the dam committee and I think was representative to the budget committee and also is currently active in many coastal and conservation type committees in town. So the Riverfront Advisory Committee and the Coastal Adaptation Work Group and a couple others, I think. So he approached me and Steve about having, I guess, for an all-boards meeting or, or town-wide, whether it's a webinar or an opportunity to talk about some of the, the work that's been done by the various agencies that work on behalf of the river, of the watershed and the communities in the area. So things like the Coastal Adaptation Works, Work Group and, you know, work that's been done around sea level rise and climate change. And there's all these different studies that have happened over the last decade or even longer and groups that are working in different capacities. One of the things is the Riverfront Advisory Committee that we have here in town. And so bringing some of those people together and inviting, you know, not just the town council, but planning and budget committee and CIP and just, and Riverfront Advisory and conservation. And so having all of those people kind of gathered together in one area to hear all the same information. So it's something that we're working on. We have a couple of dates. So we're, you know, going to continue to work with a couple of the players that, that Dale has. Liz Durfee was one of the people, so. And this is something that I think we could continue, like, as an all-boards, you know, like, this type of a summit type of a meeting to do on an annual basis. Other communities do that for, for different topics, so I think it could be really beneficial.
It's, it's not a mandatory meeting, so it's not a ninety-one A situation. It's a more of an educational, if you want to come, we're providing a webinar and you may attend, but no decision will be made. And so it's not an official meeting.
So it gives us a little leeway, especially if we do it this year, you know, it allows, it would allow us to do it via, as a webinar. But in a perfect world, it would be great to do it, you know, at the mill space or, you know, or even down, you know, downstairs here, but, or to do it in a venue and have that opportunity to talk and meet each other and, you know, just have it in maybe a little bit more of a relaxed atmosphere. I don't know that that will happen this year, just because. So, so we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted. We're going to have another conversation and we'll keep working on that. And so I'm not seeing any other committee reports, so we will move on to resolutions. We have one resolution in the second reading tonight and that is, resolution, I'm opening it. Twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, it's the request for legal interest in the Gaziano tract on Neil Mill Road. And I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, request for legal interest in Gaziano tract Neil Mill Road.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Prior to any action, I'd ask that the council amend the resolution in the third section. We did not receive a complete packet in time. We did not know the exact wording that was needed for this, so we placed what we thought was correct with a conservation easement, and that is not what was requested from the Conservation Commission. It was an executory interest. So I just need to ask the council to make a motion to amend that section.
I'll make a motion to amend the third section pursuant to the town manager's comments.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Now I think the, then the main motion, I think the memo speaks for itself. It's, the Conservation Commission has approved seventy-five thousand dollars from its conservation fund to go to Southeast Land Trust. The acquisition related cost of approximately thirty-two acre tract owned by Christopher Gaziano on tax map, our seven lot one. And that we would accept a legal interest in the form, which was recommended as we just said, but authorized to the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Southeast Land Trust. And I would be negotiating that with legal counsel with them.
And I know that we have members of the Conservation Commission and, and Southeast Land Trust here. So I, I don't know if you had anything to add.
Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Great. So are there any questions? I know that there was one, uh, there was one question that talked about, um, uh, parking in that area, and so I.
And we are working with Southeast Land Trust and the Conservation Commission to address that. The Public Works Director met with them on Friday and is coming up with a plan to do that.
Great. Please, yeah.
I'm Ryan Hart, the Executive Director of South, Southeast Land Trust in Hampshire. And for those who are not familiar with organization or nonprofit land conservation organization based in Axum area, we work in Rockhampton, Stratford County to protect land for the benefit of people and nature. And really excited to have the support committee for this project, um, it's been a priority for a long time, so. In terms of the parking, um, we did meet with Rick and Patrick Reynolds out there, and, um, there were kind of three options that we evaluated. And one of them is on property that's, that's an organization called the Oms, uh, the other on private landowners. So, um, just for everybody's understanding, the Gaziano tract is seven hundred feet from the end of the paved road. So parking out there would be, um, your chief of police would probably be pretty unhappy, uh, because kids would go out there. It just would be problematic, and it's harder for us to manage. So that, that's not really an option on this tract itself. But knowing that the town did do improvements to address the, uh, increased use that started last year with COVID and with the completion of the bridge that connects the interior trail system. Um, what we, for the property that we own, uh, that the town helped acquire a few years ago, it's directly adjacent to Joff Barnett's property at the end. And there's a possibility, um, if we can get approval from the National Reserve, his Conservation Service, who holds restrictions on the property that we own, we might be able to push the stone wall back six to ten feet and then allow parking diagonally heading. So you could double the number of spaces or at least get half as many going. Um, that's, that, we think that's pretty reasonable, but that restrictions are pretty significant and maybe not as flexible as we would hope. Um, I know Patrick Reynolds reached out to Joff about whether his property might be available in some kind of arrangement, and that was declined. Not a surprise, he has plans, I'm sure, for his property. And then the third option is whether some portion of another property owned by Jean Sullivan might be possible. Um, but that has conservation easement held by the town, and she's not been involved in any discussions. So it's also probably the more challenging of those three options for variety reasons. Um, the interesting thing is, we got an email from Patrick that said, when he reached out to Joff, Joff actually said, um, I haven't really seen any problems since the parking was created. So, um, I know Rick felt like there were continued problems, and maybe the best solution is to continue to monitor it from neighbor complaints, because I know there was a lot of concerns last year, especially when there was a lot of use before the parking was addressed, and see if, um, additional parking is needed. The steps we committed to take with Rick in the meeting was when, um, we'll put a kiosk in. So most of the entrances that have parking, there are kiosks that say, like, here's where you are, here's the map, go this way. And the thought was that would go near the gate. Um, and then near the parking area, we're willing to put inside as it says, um, like, at least on blocked driveways. Uh, if this is filled, consider parking on Bald Hill Road at the other parking area, which has plenty of on, off-street parking on Sam Moore Drive and New Fields and other areas. So it's a smaller lot, it's only four to six cars, um, and related signage pointing people to where the, you know, how to get to the properties that are. Although I think it's mostly people from, like, the New Market that use that location, because we don't actively promote that as our intention. Um, so, you know, I guess I want you all to leave us understanding, we're a willing partner to the extent we can anything with the limited spots we have. Does that help?
Um, I think so. I, that's all for that, uh, topic. I was curious, and I don't know if I missed it. Um, you know, the, the map was included in the, in, in our packet. Um, but is there an acreage? Uh, just, because I know this, this connects, you know, other, other conservation land and, um, I was just curious, it's really just from my own interest to what's.
The Gaziano property is thirty-two point four acres. It was surveyed by DUCET survey, so that's accurate. I know the tax map had a different number because there was some confusion about where the town line was, and that was resolved in the original agreement it was concerned. Um, and the remaining, the rest of the property that we own is four hundred and fifty acres. Right now, it's basically, we own this five acres. Then there's additional land that's been protected that's owned by private individuals. So like the Hilton tree farm that the New Market conserved. Um, and in New Fields, um, the Daley farm on, on Bald Hill Road, Bobby Burns easement, which is now Windrock Vineyard is concerned, and across the street, the Bernie Family Farm. There's a lot.
Right.
It's several thousand acres in our town.
Okay, that's why I was curious.
And I'm sure Dwayne has the number somewhere in his folder, but, uh, it's several thousand acres, pretty good. Actually goes all the way on the title hill, great point, pretty much all the farm.
So throughout New Market and New Fields?
And into Exeter.
And into Exeter.
And actually, we're in Acton, too, so it's.
That's great. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions, so, um, thank you.
And Dwayne's our land production director, I think he's there before, but he's available for.
Thank you. Um, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, uh, so I just do want to say that, um, I think it's really, this is a really important piece of land and, um, I'm excited to cast my vote to approve, um, our, our piece of it. So, um, so seeing nothing, if you can call the roll, please. Councilor Bayback?
Aye.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Councilor Sanders?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six, the air. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, moving on.
Your name?
We, thanks. Um, to nominations and appointments, we have two this evening. And the first is for, um, John Green to the zoning board of adjustment, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of John Green to the zoning board of adjustment with a term expiration date of April twenty-twenty-two.
Second. Thank you, and I should add that's as an alternate. Um, any questions or comments? Um, seeing none, if you can call the roll, please. Councilor Bayback?
Aye.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Councilor Sanders?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six, the air. Uh, the next item that we have is, uh, the application for Russell Simon, um, to the CIP Committee with a term to expire August twenty-twenty-three, and I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Russ Simmons for the CIP Committee, um, with a new expiration date of twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Uh, any questions or comments? Um, I will just say that Russ has served in a variety of capacities in town and, uh, has certainly been on the CIP Committee for a number of years now. Um, and is a really knowledgeable and, I think, important member of that committee. So thank you for your willingness to continue to serve Russ. Um, and so seeing no other, um, comments, if you can call the roll, please. Councilor Bayback?
Aye.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Councilor Sanders?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six, the air. Okay, and next we have, um, one resolution in the first reading, um, and that's Resolution twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two dash oh-eight, and it's selecting Revision Energy as the town's preferred vendor for solarized New Market. Whereas the New Market Energy and Environment Committee wishes to increase the number of homes in New Market that rely on solar power. And whereas the Energy and Environment Committee wishes to follow the solarized model as set forth by the US Department of Energy. And whereas the Energy and Environment Committee solicited proposals for companies to assist residents with installing solar systems. Excuse me, and whereas the Energy and Environment Committee recommends partnering with Revision Energy to implement solarized New Market, now therefore be it resolved by New Market Town Council, that the New Market Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Revision Energy to serve as the town's preferred vendor for solarized New Market. First reading, September one, twenty-twenty-one. And moving on, any, um, closing comments? I am seeing none. Um, I don't have any. Checking my notes, I don't have any. Um, so, uh, and we have no correspondence?
None.
Then I will consider us adjourned. Thank you.